I open this meeting of the Upstate County Commission. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance, and approval of minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Zachary, if you can read the notes?
Good morning.
Good morning, Jackie.
The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse in Exeter, September 18, 2016 at 9:00 AM. Terry Cutwright called the meeting to order, pressed before Terry Cutwright, Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Genius Dick, whose Commission Assistant, Jacqueline Dinklock, her Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of February 11, 2016, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the James Curry Scholarship Announcement and Application for 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant, the EMPG Grant Application, in the amount of $28,965. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the advertisement slash posting for Request for Bids for the Groundskeeping Contract for 2016. Sealed bids must be received no later than 9:00 AM on March 10, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Employment Advertisement slash Job Posting for Temporary Seasonal Groundskeeping Maintenance Position. Applications must be received by close of business on Wednesday, March 2, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Order Overruling of Ejection to Qualification of Personal Representative for the Estate of Dallas Jackson Tacey, deceased, as submitted by Deavry, fiduciary Commissioner. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Renewal of Membership in the NARE National Association for the Exchange of Industrial Resources, Free Supplies Program. The renewal rate is $495 for 10 months, effective March 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the Rental Contract for Use of the Buchanan Upsher Recreational Park for the 2016 season. The rental contract is for Pavilion and Pool Facilities, including Lifeguard Services. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Virgil LaRosa as Board Member to fill an unexpired position on the Buchanan Upsher Airport Authority, as recommended by William Thomas, BUAA President. Mr. LaRosa's term will expire on June 30, 2017. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Immediate Termination of Jerika Phillips as E-911 Telecommunicators, requested by Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Senate Director. Terry Cutwright, you've followed for your information items. Number one, correspondence from Michael Live State Two, Program Coordinator, Senior Companion Program, requesting funding in the amount of $1,500 for fiscal year 2017. The request will be considered during our budget meetings. Two, correspondence from Michelle Strater, President, Southern Upsher Business Association, requesting funding in the amount of $1,500 for fiscal year 2017. The request will be considered during budget meetings, the March budget meetings. Three, correspondence from Cheyenne Walters, Program Director for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Day Report Center, to Carol Smith concerning the approval of Colonel Waldo's hourly rate of pay at $12,040 per hour for training, with one training per month. Ms. Waldo's regular rate of pay for the VIPPS class and pairing class will stay the same at $50 after payroll deductions and $75 respectively. Number four, Upstate County Community Baby Show, March 19, 2016. Five, attendance and/or notices of meetings as listed. Six, meeting minutes as listed. Seven, meetings as listed. Eight, Board of Review and Equalization meetings scheduled as listed. Nine, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Jerry Kimball, Upstate County Resident, volunteered his services to mount grass at the airport. Terry Wallace advised that she will follow up with the Buchanan Upsher Airport Authority at the next board meeting for approval and authorization to mount. Richard Edwards, Buchanan Mayor, appeared before the Commission to discuss funding of the Buchanan Upsher Recreational Park pool. Ms. Bradwurts suggested forming a joint county with city participation committee to look into a levy such as Monique Yadi County has proposed for funding arts and recreation. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following elements as listed. The Commission approved the following donations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend meetings as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:00 AM. At 1:00 PM, the Commission reconvened as the Board of Review and Equalization. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Board of Review and Equalization adjourned at 1:05 PM. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Department Supervisors. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Policy Board. The Commission reconvened at 3:15 PM with no further business. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission meeting turned at 3:15 PM.
Mr. You've heard the reading of the meeting, the last meeting, the minutes of our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? No, I don't want to add any motion today. Approved. I'll stick to the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. We have a few appointments this morning. At 9:30, we're going to have a discussion regarding the fully insured group health insurance for employees, retirees, and COVID participants. At 9:45, Karen Stickley, West Virginia Conservation Agency, Tiger Valley Conservation District, Pectron donation. At 10:00 AM, bid opening, review and award aerial photography and ortho photography services. 10:30, bid opening and review architectural space engineer service for the repair, replacement or of a portion of the press metal shank or and the tuck point repairer of the of two brick chimneys, both on the Upstate County Courthouse. 3:00 PM, for years 2016 Court Security Grant Meeting. We've got some time, so I'll go through the items for discussion, action, or approval. One, approval and signature of 2016 Board of Review and Equalization Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval and signature of 2016 Community Corrections Grant and Lewis Upsher Agreement. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion. On second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Three, approval of 2017 Budget Hearing Schedule. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Correspondence from Steve Linger, E-911 Director, requesting approval for the employment of Bobby Joe Queen as a full-time telecommunicator, trainee, at the beginning pay wage rate of $11 per hour, effective March 7, 2016. Does that need approval, Carrie?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, approval of Lewis M. Control Facility Volunteer, Carly Pepper. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Approved. For your information, items, one, correspondence from Debbie Thacker Wilfong regarding 2016, 2017 public utility values. That's on page 22. And I think we were, there was a slight increase of that.
Really a large increase, 37 million.
37 million? Got it.
Slight.
We need some more slides. Okay. Item two, Upstate County Molly's Reports, January 2016. Three, Upstate County Sheriff's Financial Statement, January 2016. Ten, Lewis Upsher Animal Control Adoption Financial Transactions, January 2016. Five, Art and Public Places Program Announcements. Six, Agendas and/or Notices of Meetings. Seven, Meeting Minutes. Eight, Meetings. Nine, Appointments Meeting for meed or upcoming. Next regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission, March 3, 2016, at 9:00 AM, Upstate County Courthouse Annex. Do we have any bills to pay? We've got about 17 minutes before our next schedule, which is a discussion on the health issue. We have hot water, lots of coffee, tea up here. I forget what wishes to. Our table. It's 9:30, and we now have a discussion on the decision regarding fully insured health insurance plan. We received one fully insured bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we asked them to mirror it exactly according to the self-insured plan we have now. When the numbers come in, I think it was $53,000 to carry the same insurance on the employees, it was a $53,000 increase to go fully insured for basically the same policy. About the only difference then would be the network that Highmark or Blue Cross Blue Shield has in place, and the requirement for mail order prescriptions, which I think we can amend our policy, maybe if we look at it, to make a change in that. My personal thinking on it is, there was another factor. It was going to cost us $141,000 to get out of the self-insured program. And what that was, was an, part of it was an insurance policy to cover bills that may have been incurred in June of 2000, June 29, 2016, because the providers had one year to send bills. So we'd have to have a policy to cover, cover us in case there were any policies that hadn't come through the books yet, as of July 1, 2017. We asked the employees what they wanted and took a survey, and last week's Policy Board Meeting and Supervisors Meeting, it was pretty unanimous that they wanted, the employees wanted to stay with the self-insured program. So personally, I recommend that we stay with our self-insured program and maybe review the policy every year or two, or a couple years, three years, or as needed, if we feel needed. We felt that we needed to look at it and get a comparison this year, so we do.
We built up a healthy reserve to assist for us to, we have insurance in the event that we have, have stop-loss insurance, and then we were to have a catastrophic event where X number of employees have major medical or dependents have major medical issues. I think the way it stands now, we have enough to cover around 15 such incidents prior to our having to worry about stop-loss. So that is highly unlikely to happen in the insurance world. They tell us the risk of that happening is very remote. But you always have to have insurance because you don't know if something catastrophic should occur. So I agree with the President that at this point in time, the best course of action is to remain self-insured under the existing policy.
I'd just like to thank the employees that gave the opinion to this commission. I think it was good that the commission asked the employees for their input. I think that it's wise to check every year to see what's out, turn and see what is best for the employees and the citizens of Upstate County. With that being said, and saving fifty-seven thousand dollars, and our self-insured program has worked, and has worked well for the employees, and has been able to save us money over the past years, aye and four, stand with self-insure. I do want to thank Jamie with Blue Cross Blue Shield for coming and giving us a quote. He's the only one that did. With that, for self-insure.
Are you open to a motion?
I'm open to a motion. So moved.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of staying self-insured, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Do you just want to make one correction for the record? We got the one Highmark, West Virginia Blue Cross Blue Shield quote, however, there were four agents that were interested in the policy.
Correct. We admitted a decision of the trade. If possible, the changes to be made to have some medical.
That's correct.
If possible, I was given preference to local carriers.
And you interviewed your local carrier to be included.
Correct.
But, buddy, I think a yearly look at this might be a little bit too soon, unless we see something come up that we need to look at.
Well, I think many people are options, though, because things change every year. And we did have four people that gave us bids through Blue Cross Blue Shield. We only had one in the county, and I'm for spending the taxpayer's money when we can to the citizens of this county that's worked here and made Upstate County what it is.
Okay. So our next, we've got about 10 minutes to our next appointment. Is that an appointment? Is she going to be here?
As far as I know.
She's.
Is she Karen?
Yeah, she is, she's held up by the weather a little bit. She's in route, she just texted me.
Okay.
So if you all would like to wait.
Okay. We can't, we can't start until 9:25 anyway.
Oh, okay.
She has to keep you back here.
She just said 15 minutes.
We'll take a short recess now.
I've got supervisors with the district with me, so.
Okay. You'll step up to the podium and give your name, who you are.
My name is Ed Martin. I'm with the West Virginia Conservation Agency. I have two supervisors with Tiger Valley Conservation District with me, Mr. Sensen Dobler and Mr. Reeder. Basically, the agency is just here to provide an update to the commission as far as the work that's been done on Pectron Channel. You all are historically, and I actually live with sponsors, and contribute on an annual basis for the maintenance work that's done on that channel. So what our agency is doing is making an attempt to reach out to all the sponsors statewide to make sure that the sponsors see, understand where the money is being spent, that the county's contributing. So with that, you guys contribute on an annual basis, about $3,900, I believe it is. I believe the.
That's what I saw when it was.
Yep. Tiger Valley Conservation District has already sent their request to the, to the commission for the upcoming year. Now, last year, we, our agency was in a little bit of a transition. We were short-staffed, and we didn't do a whole lot of work on the channel last year. Previous two years, we had run a spray contract and did some brush removal and everything, amounting roughly $6,000 worth of work. And we will be conducting the annual inspection, I believe it's in the letter they sent, on April 5, 9:00 AM, which obviously we would like to invite the commission to attend. If you have the capability, go out and see the channel. At that point in time, we'll be identifying the work required for the upcoming year.
That channel, that channel, it comes down through Hodginsville and it goes over to Cortita?
Yes. It is about five miles of channel, I believe. So it's a pretty big task to maintain.
So are there other, other counties given to that?
Oh, yeah, I believe, I probably shouldn't be quoted on this number. There's roughly 40.
Be careful with the press man.
Yeah, I understand.
I know that's why.
Well, and please, please remember, I'm filling in for somebody else that does this on a normal basis. Roughly, we have 40 other counties, I believe, or other sponsors. But yes, we have, for a good example, would be in Preston County. The Preston County Commission contributes on an annual basis for the OMR, Operation Maintenance, of the Upper Deckers Creek Watership. There's one channel there and five flood control centers. So yeah, this is, and it would be based on the agreements that were set up between the counties and the district.
But this Pectron Watership, Upstate County's the only, only county that participates in that, right?
Correct.
Now, where else, do they give funds for the Pectron?
Yes, our, our agency, the West Virginia Conservation Agency matches the contribution. So your $3,900 contribution is then matched by our agency. So then on an annual basis, there would be, what, 7, 7, 800 if my math is right.
Yep. So, so do you spend that 7, 800 every year, or if there's any money left over?
That money stays in, dedicated to that project. It does not move away from that project. So there, I believe there is, and I can't give you an exact number, there's a little bit of money sitting in, waiting to be used right now, but it is, that money's dedicated. And that's county money as well as the state match. So as soon as you all send in your contribution, then our agency receives a letter of request for the match.
Now, the creek that comes through Hodginsville and down through Tito, there's some little tributaries that feed into that. Does that take in those little tributaries too?
To be honest with you, I don't have all the information right in front of me, and as I said, we, I'm, I'm kind of in a period of transition. I'm learning.
I don't, I don't believe that takes care of the tributaries. This is the main stream.
This is the main channel?
Yes.
Where they did the flood control years ago.
Right, and it's never flooded since. That was 1965, wasn't it?
That's a long time ago, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
We have some of our channel projects that do extend out of tributaries. That's why I was a little bit uncertain on that.
Okay. I remember one time it disappeared into the mine. Did you guys have to take care of that, or did the mine take care of that?
I think the mine took care of it.
Did it?
Yeah, but we offered help.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It did, it just, you know, in a matter of an hour, it dried up.
Disappeared underground.
Uh-huh. Yeah, right. Just about, just about one fire department checked out there. Just operate for me.
And when, when did this happen? I'm still somewhat new to the agency.
Oh, shoot. I can't remember.
Twelve years ago, something like that, wasn't it? I wonder if longer than that.
Yeah, it was longer than that. It was probably in the late 70s, early 80s.
That's right. That's basically what my agency is here to do, is to provide just a summary on an annual, and we're going to do this on a regular basis. We've maybe been remiss with some of the sponsors in years past in not letting them know where the funds go, or just trying to keep everyone better informed.
So you say April 5, you're going to be down that way?
Yes, we'll be meeting at the Tiger Valley office at 9:00 AM.
How about, how about I just meet you down at Pectron somewhere?
We usually meet right there at the church in Hodginsville.
Okay, all right.
What time do you think you would be at the church if you're meeting at the Philippi office at 9:00?
How long does it take to get from the Philippi office to Hodginsville?
Hmm, 25 minutes.
25 minutes, so let's say 9:30.
Okay. Yeah, it runs right behind my house.
Oh, okay.
Personal interest, please.
Very familiar with it.
Did you accuse yourself from this? Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you very much for your efforts, though.
Thank you. When Karen arrives, she'll have some informational packets that I did not have, but I want sure that we give them to you guys.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Whoever you have a question.
Question, this gentleman, I've heard that there are possibly personal contamination of the Pectron District, but no specific identification in your efforts. Is there any possibility of identifying potential sites for sewage contamination of the street?
Did you hear that?
This is to us.
Not much to you.
Our agency is not a regulatory agency. We don't typically deal in water quality. That would be an issue. I believe you would have to probably consult with DEP on, we deal with soil erosion, bank stabilization, that, that type of thing.
I just thought maybe you would see things that would be suspicious and you could report, and that's why I'm, what I'm basically asking, not that you do a lot of testing or anything like that.
Right, well, that, I guess that would be something that we could possibly look into, but as I said, we're, we're not a regulatory agency, and I understand that. But if you provide, if you are aware of that information, provide it to the Health Department, it would be helpful.
Do you know something? Does the Health Department know something?
We don't know. It's presented against us. We've been told we're suspicious of it, but no identified sites.
Karen?
Hi there.
How's it?
I apologize for being late.
That's okay.
It was the weather.
He, he went over for a kid.
I do have some handouts for you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Did you all have any other questions?
Dr. Reed might have a question for you.
There's been the suspicion raised of sewage contamination of Pex Run, but no identified sites. As long as you all are doing your work there, if you identify potential suspected sites, if you could report that to the health department, not expecting to do testing or anything like that.
Not to my knowledge. Basically, when we did the annual inspection last year on Pex Run, I don't know that we noted any of that. And we did have the MRCS-
If you found suspicion, you could report it.
I suppose it needs to be reported, but we didn't see anything. Because basically, MRCS was with us, and there's nothing noted on our report. And we didn't see anything. Is there anything else you all need to ask, or if you would like to hand out?
Thank you. So do you also spray the creeks annually?
Do what?
Do you spray the creeks annually?
No, just as needed.
We did do a spraying job there, though. I think it's in your handout. And we were, there's some huge streams and limbs.
Do you walk the whole stream? And if you walk the whole stream, if you would see some contamination, as Dr. Reed mentioned, could you make note of that, maybe let the health department?
Definitely. I think it would be evident in the stream, in the channel, if there was sanitary waste going into it. You know, I really do. I think it would be more than evident that we would see that. You know, the only place where you're probably piled bags is on the railroad bridge. And, I mean, you could see, but you're only like five feet above it. There was no sanitary problems, but not aware of it. But yes, we would know that most definitely.
Don't raise, raise any suspicion. Keep your eyes open.
Dr. Reed, would the health department be able to test that water service at different locations? Tell them?
We can't, we can't do anything unless we have specific site locations to do the question.
Do you guys have any more questions?
Okay.
Do you need just a few questions?
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's 10:00 a.m. We'll have bid openings and review and award the aerial photography and orthographic, photographic services. I haven't explained it before.
I actually have the definition.
Most of it went over my head.
Mine too.
An ortho photo is an aerial photographic geometrically corrected such that the scale is uniform. The photo has the same lack of distortion as a map. Unlike an uncorrected aerial photograph, the ortho photograph can be used to measure true distances because it is accurate representation of the earth's surface having been adjusted for topographic error, lens distortion, and kermitile.
Now, I remember. Thank you, Karen.
You can receive sealed bids. We'll start with the first here. Terry, do you want to take note of these numbers?
Terry, is this for the entire county?
It would be, yes, sir.
Including the city?
Yes. I do hope that you'll be able to award the bids today, but I suspect you'll need to review these proposals in detail before you're able to do so. So that may be by this afternoon.
We want to ensure that they're within the-
Meet specifications of a bid. These are from Cucera International.
What was that again, Karen?
Cucera International, A-U-C-E-R-A. I'm going to do a copy. You don't find the cost schedule and bid forms on page eight, or sorry, tab eight. And you've asked for two different, or two different bids here. One would be a one-year spring flight in 2016, and the second would be a flight in 2016, 2019, and 2022. The bid for the 2016 spring flight alone is $59,000. And the bid for the three combined flights is $166,000. That's $58,000 for the 2016 spring flight. 2019 spring flight would be $53,000. The 2022 spring flight would be $55,000, totaling the $166,000. I have Blue Mountain Inc.
Terry, what's the Orange County line?
It's the resolution that it's going to be flung at. The current imagery that we had is one foot, so this is going to be a much clearer, a lot better quality aerials than what we currently are using. Estimated cost of Blue Mountain's proposal can be found in Section 4. It's going to be on page 11 of 11. The bid for the 2016 spring flight is $15,975. One five, nine seven five. And for the three flights in 2016, 2019, and 2022, the total cost would be sixty, sorry, $47,925. And that's $15,975 for each flight, totaling the $47,925. Your third bid is from Ugro Earth Data Inc. Pricing proposal can be found in Section 5 on page 25. The bid for the 2016 spring flight is a amount of $71,278.13. And the bid for the multi-year contract is $224,704.29. That's for the 16 flight of $71,278.13. The 2019 flight for $74,842.3. And the 2022 flight for $78,584.13. This bid is from Quantum Spatial. In Section 4, you can see the cost breakdown on this bid. The bid for the 2016 spring flight is $70,500. The multi-year contract totals $206,500, which would be the 2016 spring flight at $70,500, the 2019 flight at $68,500, and the 2022 flight at $67,500. Our next bid comes from Sandborne Corporation. Section 5 has pricing informs. Bid for the 2016 flight is $45,400. The total for the three-year contract is $133,400. With the 2016 spring flight costing $45,400, 2019 spring flight, $44,000, and the 2022 spring flight, $44,000.
Are there any company representatives here that-
Blue Mountain.
I have a question.
Sure.
Seems like one of all the 2016, 2019, 2022, the prices are less than the initial price.
Yeah.
Ours was not. Ours was the same price. We fly over West Virginia. We're out of Quaystown, West Virginia. We've been flying since about 2006, big spring flights, since about 2009. We fly for elevation data, and we're just kind of going around collecting all this information. So our price is going to stay pretty stable. The only thing that would increase it, but we already locked you guys in if we were to get selected, the only thing that increases our price is fuel, fuel prices increased. But we, since you guys asked for the bids upfront, we've already had you locked in at the same price.
Is aviation fuel price trending pretty much as well as our motor fuel price?
I honestly haven't looked. I'm not sure. I think this year, I don't think it's changed too much in the past couple of years.
Yep. Are all of you Blue Mountain?
Yeah.
I would recommend that you probably table your decision, just until Terry Jo and I can review Blue Mountain's bid. And as long as it meets our specifications, they are the lowest bidder.
I would beg your question, I beg your discretion. We need to, I beg your question, that we defer decision until later this afternoon. We don't have a chance to review the documentation.
We may be able to possibly do it before this afternoon, just depending.
No later than this afternoon. We thank you for handing to-
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. You'll be in the area the rest of the day, or are you planning to return?
Yeah, we'll probably head out here soon. There's references in there, in Monongate County, West Virginia.
Thank you very much.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you.
It's 10:30. We'll open the bids for the review, the bidding opening and review architectural engineering service for the repair replacement of a portion of the pressed metal shank roof and the tuck point repair on the two brick chimneys, both on the Upstate County court house. Karen, if you'll open another portion?
Just so you're aware, the West Virginia code requires that you accept qualifications from architects and engineers. They won't actually include a bid price. What you do from there is interview your top three applicants with the highest qualifications. And in this case, you've only had two bids received. You'd interview both of those, determine who is most qualified for the project, and begin negotiations. If you're happy with the negotiated price for the most qualified architect, then you would go to the second most qualified architect, and so on.
What we're paying the architect to do is oversee the project.
Yes, and also-
Then we'll go out for the project at some later point.
Yes. The architect would be responsible for creating the scope of work that they would advertise to select a contractor for. And they would also manage the project. So you have two bids. The first is from Y, sorry, WYK Association. And I shouldn't say bids, two statements of qualifications.
That's a Clark's, right?
Yes. And again, there aren't any numbers for you to read here, so I'm just going to give these to you for review.
Thank you.
And the second is from Chapman Technical.
So when we have, we just have two, we would interview these two? So we could schedule a date for that today?
I would like to look at our calendar and reach out to them, see what their availability is before you actually set me dates. I would like to look at our calendar and reach out to them to see what their availability is before you actually set me days.
Kerry, so before we would choose an architectural firm, they would give us a number, right?
You would choose the most qualified out of the two and then you would start negotiations with them. If their negotiated contract price does not come within your budget, then you would start negotiations with the second most qualified firm. Once you stop negotiations with one, you can't go back. So you need to make sure that that's their final price before you would go to the second most qualified.
You want to take a while to look over this?
It will, yeah. What I'll do is reach out to both and determine what their schedule is and set up interviews.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll commence masterful 3pm. And we appreciate your efforts on both of these. You're doing a good job. Appreciate it.
If you'd like to stay in session, I think Terry Jo and I will have some feedback for you on Blue Mountain proposal.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll recess now for a while. Kerry, did you all review the bids?
Yes, we reviewed the proposal in comparison to the bid packet and RFP that were released. And Blue Mountain does meet the qualifications and specifications that were expressed in your RFP. I do have a couple of things to cover with you before you make a decision. You required a 10% bid bond for the project. And Blue Mountain did supply you with a bid bond. It stated February 23rd of 2016. And it needs all the specifications. The only problem is the insurance company, when they gave them this bid bond mistakenly, made the obligated Marion County assessor. And I believe that's because that's their last contract they got a bid bond for. So that was the mistake of the insurance company that in the PDF that they fill in, they left Marion County rather than changing it to Upsher County.
It's just a typo?
Yes. I reached out to Kaylee with Blue Mountain, who was here this morning. And we spoke with Kaylee and Jacob and they're getting in touch with the insurance company to get us a new copy. I told them to just get an email with the copy today and we can wait for the hard copy to come in the mail. On page eight of 11 of the proposal. It states that the project area includes Upsher County and a minimum of 500 feet past the county boundary. And the RFP required a half a mile past the boundary. When I spoke with Jacob, he confirmed that that would be a half a mile. So that would mean you would get a half a mile into all surrounding counties.
Do we need to get that in writing?
That can be in writing in their contract agreement. But they verbally gave us the understanding that that would be there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
There is one subcontractor in the RFP which you understood when you put out your RFP and the only stipulation you had there was that you would have to approve the subcontractor. The subcontractor that BMI uses is Mr. Arlie Winters III at Air Photographs Inc. I'm sorry, he's out of Martinsburg, West Virginia. And they give his number and his email. You requested references for Blue Mountain Inc. And oddly enough, Terry Jo and I have actually already talked to both of those individuals that they listed as references. Before we put out the bid packet, Terry Jo made multiple contacts with other floodplain coordinators within the state to ask whether or not they have had aerials done in the past. And to use their bid packets is somewhat of a template. And two of the individuals that she spoke with used Blue Mountain and they both gave excellent references. Terry Jo's actually seen Blue Mountain's work. And that's one thing that Jacob was concerned of. Whenever I spoke to him on the phone, he said, "I'm sure the commissioners are looking at this bid wondering the same as I do when I go to Best Buy and see a $5 radio and a $100 radio. And you wonder why the radio is $5 in comparison to the $100." He wants you to know that the quality of products they provide is the exact same as the other proposals that you received. And Terry Jo has actually seen that product and she can testify to that herself.
They put it that it had to be industry standard. So they didn't have much wiggle room anyway, based on our RFP as to what the final outcome of that product was going to be. And by all means, their quality is extremely well. I mean, very legible, very easy to read. There wasn't much at all coverage, like with cloud coverage or fog or anything like that. Of course, it will be all week off, so you'll be able to see from the sky to the ground with no obstructions whatsoever, exactly what we need and the assessor's office would need as far as the project, you know, what we actually do for work. And then we also had asked them for some other examples of jobs that they had already done. And they listed multiple jobs in there. And as Kerry had said earlier, you know, some of those from the local counties, like Randolph County and Harrison County, Wester County. I've already spoken with all of them and those are deliverables that have already been given to those counties for projects that are similar in nature to what we're actually requesting ourselves. And they were very happy and gave great praises with not only the quality of the work, but just working with them in general, you know, with the employees. That couldn't beat them.
Terry, you and I also saw them representative of the Waco conference. I believe they're starting to get a lot of business from the local counties in West Virginia because of their price difference.
Well, I'm sure.
One other thing we have to note here, a change detection cost. Terry Jo let you know that this was something that was available from a lot of different companies that do aerials. The change detection shows a difference in aerials for three years. So this would be for 2014, 2015, and 2016. So Terry Jo or the assessor or 911 or whoever would need to access the program would be able to look at the difference between the 2014 and the 2016 data. And they actually provide that in the form of an Excel spreadsheet. They give a price for that. I would recommend that you talk with the assessor and the other entities that use the program and see if that's something that they would be interested in. By all means, I believe Terry Jo is. It would help her immensely in her position. The additional charge for that, if you decide to get the change detection cost, is $7,192.58. So that is available if you would like to have it. But you did not request it to be added into the quotes for this bid.
So you're saying that if they flew over now and took a picture of a building on the property, then this program would tell you that that building wasn't there?
Even a front porch.
Even a front porch.
A new color of a roof. You know, we have a lot of people, a number of people who are switching from shankled roof to the, you know, the metal roof that has a color to it. It'll detect that course.
And the assessor's required every three years to go out into the different districts and assess the properties. So that would be a great benefit to him and his position. Because they could verify their findings with the data that Blue Mountain provides. And it would also help, Terry Jo could get that report and send out requests for building permits for anybody that's in non-compliance with your building permit ordinance that has done some type of improvement or moved the government that did not get a building permit.
And that was how much?
And it's based on, because they provide it to you based on your parcel data. So it's based on the number of parcels that they would actually review in-house. You know, each year, each parcel would be reviewed to actually indicate those changes. So it's based on, you know, so much per parcel for your county is the reason, is how that dollar amount is based.
So this is the map you got me access to? Comes up and shows you the boundary lines on each parcel?
I did provide you with that, but that, this is something completely different. They would use the assessor's parcel data. And then what they would do is they would review an aerial from, let's say, 2015 to the new aerial in 2016. And they would show, you know, let's say there was 200 different changes within just that one year. They would identify the parcel that that change was on, provide it to us in an Excel sheet. Okay, this is the parcel that has a change from 2015 to 2016. And this is the changes that we indicated with those flights. So they'll tell us detailed information of what those changes are based on parcel data. That would be very easy for us to be able to know, okay. Carrie lives in city limits of Icannon. She has a new roof on her house. It was changed sometime between the spring of 2015 and the spring of 2016.
Then you could go back and see if I got a building permit.
That's...
Or you can update your assessor's records based on that new roof or the new addition.
Wow, thank you. Probably ought to do that. That just opens up a lot of doors for the photographer work that we're talking about having now.
It would be phenomenal if what I do on a daily basis to identify structures that have maybe been built that I, number one, don't have an address on yet. So, you know, for safety reasons, it definitely would help identify some of those structures. New camps or something like that, because of the areas I'm using, you know, I can't see them. And unless I can get through a gate to see, okay, on that 100 acres, there is a camp that's built in the middle of that, you know, I don't know it. And so unless someone comes in and says, "Hey, I need an address for my structure," we could have, you know, I don't imagine, but we could have addresses out there or structures out there that does not currently have an address for 911 purposes. It could help me identify for building permits, obviously. And the biggest thing that I see is the floodplain concerns that I have. You know, if there's somebody that has actually built or added an addition to their home that's in a floodplain and they didn't get a permit. You know, they have, if their house is already there and it's in a flood zone and any additions that are built have to comply with the current ordinance. So, you know, we might catch some things that have been done in the county based on floodplain concerns.
And I'm sure you would.
I'm sure I will too.
And there'll be changes in the county that you'll be unaware of.
I'll tell you, I have three structures that I have identified just yesterday out on the road. It's a road that I had not been on for quite a while. And one is a camper that has been, it's actually two campers that they hooked up with utilities. They're both sitting in a floodplain. And the other two are those accessory buildings, like those little buildings that you can go out to West 33 and purchase. Both of them are sitting in a flood zone. This morning, before I come in here, I'm working on certified letters to send out to those property owners. Those types of situations can be caught that from the sky, obviously, from ear to ear, that I might not catch or Donnie might not catch for a year, two years, you know, after the fact. So it definitely could benefit me in my position, but it definitely can benefit the assessor's office and the assessment reevaluation. Right, right. You know, let's say, hopefully it never happens, but flood comes in and we have eight new accessory buildings that we didn't know were there and it's clogging up a bridge and, you know, then it's putting water, dispersed water on 200 homes that normally wouldn't have had water in them that now somebody's going to be responsible for, for the cleanup. So it definitely could help me in my position.
If that building's at the bridge, it might be hard for you to find out whoever owned that building before.
Right. Unless that new aerials that would show it, right? Yeah, because I doubt anyone's going to claim it.
Well... So you're saying that they're giving us everything we wanted?
Upon Terry Jo and I's review, yes.
I'd like to make a comment also. Totally unrelated, in searching through the other bid packages. This is the only one that has an affidavit of non collusion, which impressed me very much based on my background. And basically, affidavit sets forth that the vendor, which of course in this case is Blue Mountain, has not either directly or indirectly entered into any agreement, participated in any collusion or otherwise taken any action and restrained a free competitive bidding in connection with request proposal for aerial photography and ortho photography in Upsher County. And what this is saying is, and this is something that voluntarily was provided in the bid package, is that there's no bribery or extortion involved, quite frankly. That no one in this county has received anything of value in exchange for awarding this contract. I am impressed by that alone. And I would consider that maybe as a commissioner, we might want to adopt a policy. Not today, of course, we have to research it. Possibly adopt a policy wherein any vendor exercising business with the county have to submit such an affidavit. This is notarized, has the effect of basically swearing under oath to the facts contained in the non collusion affidavit. And I think that anytime in today's world, we see sad situations where county commissions, city council members, others fail to hold up to this ethical standards that we expect of elected officials. It's happened in county commissions, it's happened in city halls and other locations as well. I think we should try to hold ourselves to the highest standard of ethics and propriety relative to conduct that we do in terms of bids, awarding contracts to companies. So I would want the commission to consider and maybe do some research on it. Possibly have such an affidavit as a requirement of companies and businesses or individuals that do business with the county in the future. And they figure that...
I think that'd be a good idea.
Because all too often, I think, some of those things, some of those things may occur that we're not aware of. So at least if something does become knowledgeable, you have something to go to to say. You falsified it?
There was one other item that I would like to mention to you. On page 11 of 11, on the same page as the estimated costs to aerial photography rights. Blue Mountain Inc. will retain rights to raw and majority for mapping projects and ortho photos for those mapping projects and for ortho photo projects that are not countywide. Upsher County retains the right to distribute or sell the countywide ortho mosaic as it pleases. So you would have rights to sell those moving forward.
And we didn't have that before.
But that also means that Blue Mountain has the right. So if they come in and fly Upsher County in 2016, they're keeping those rights. If they can also sell them to another company or another vendor or, you know, whomever. But we will actually have the rights to do that as well in these.
I'm guessing one of the reasons that Blue Mountain wants to retain those rates is because if Randolph County would want to have a flyover and they want to have a half mile into Upsher County, then they would be able to include those in their submitted rights. Just as we will be using the surrounding counties' half mile from the upper in this contract.
Okay, then I'll entertain the motion to approve.
Would you like to specify if you're going to do the one-year contract or the three-year contract? The one-year contract is the flight in 2016 in the spring for $15,975. And then the three-year contract is for 2016, 2019, and 2022, all in the spring of each year, for $15,975 each totaling $47,925. Now I would also request that you specify whether or not you would include the change detection in the amount of $7,192.58.
Where is that reflected?
That is in another section, section B. And it will, like this. Section B doesn't have page numbers.
What we thought is going to cost us to have the photographing work done and the flyover, even with the detection program, is within the scope of what we thought we were going to have to pay. I think we ought to know with the detection.
Which policy or which contract?
I think, I can't hardly see them getting any cheaper. And if you think we need them every two years, then maybe we should do them every two years.
It would be every three. That's one thing that I liked. You said that the only difference was in gas prices, but they're locking you in with these gas prices. And where we are right now with gas prices... And where we are right now with gas prices, they're only going to go up, I would assume. I wouldn't imagine it would get any lower. I should say fueled with them.
If I could just say, the only thing that I would say, you know, with Blue Mountain being in the state of West Virginia and obviously seeking other counties for the same service, granted, you might have the cost of the fuel that could play a part, but that $15,000 could also maybe come down. You know, the more companies out there that realize that there's companies out there that are doing it for true cost versus trying to make it a whole bunch of money. So, you know, obviously it's completely your decision to make, but that's something too. You know, if you enter into a contract with them now, you're locking in that you're going to pay that price. But in three years, when we're ready to fly the next flight, it could have only been $12,000 in true cost, but you're going to pay the additional. So that's the only one thing that I would maybe look at in that regard. And, you know, like you said, we were kind of in our mind thinking that, you know, be in a certain ballpark and definitely the one year and including the change detection, you know, if the assessor's office is in favor of that, then that definitely falls within that realm of what we thought that would cost us, so.
Would you like to have a conversation with the assessor's office before you agree that the change detection cost?
I would like to know his opinion, yes.
Would you like me to see if he's available?
I just can't imagine that you'll ever find it any cheaper. I'm still shocked at the price. I mean, for all of the years, it's the price of what, you know, it's cheaper than what other companies were saying they do it for just one.
And that's why I think that maybe we should lock him in, you know what I mean? Because I don't think anything's going to get any cheaper. And even if it did get a little cheaper by using them to start with, they certainly gave us a outstanding price.
Oh, I totally agree.
And for their three-year services, less than one year flyovers from these other companies. So if they meet the specs, which they do, I have no problem locking them in for it.
Well, there is no doubt that the offices that utilize the aerial photography currently could definitely benefit from having a flyover every three years, by all means.
And what a plus factor is that all of a sudden somebody comes in and says, "You end up kind of mentally dependent." Because that's just like mine, I went from shingles to metal, you know what I mean?
When was the last time we had this?
We had a plane that was included, we didn't actually bid it out, but it was included in our address in the mapping project when we awarded it in 2008. So the current aerials that we are using, meaning Donnie, the call center and myself, are from 2008.
Things has changed since then.
A bunch, a whole bunch. And then the problem with like the free aerials that you can obtain off the internet, they have, they're wiggly fog. So they were flying in our area in the wrong time of the year. So you can't see anything other than treetops. You know, unless it's a clearing, then you might be able to see the ground and it's really green and things. So you can't really even make out what's on the ground with the free aerials that are, you know, that we can't obtain off the internet.
Donnie's not entering in either system of court fees, I'm assuming that on it right now.
Well, I'm sure if we had it, they'd use it.
Oh, I don't think they would be against it, I mean...
What do you think, Terry, the assessor's opinion would be on that extra cost?
I had just briefly, meaning just mentioned it in passing, I had actually called Donnie yesterday and asked him if he would like to be here for the bid opening. Just because it does, you know, it's on his office as much as what it does. You know, and I just wanted to extend the invitation, hey, I'm going to be in there. If you want to come up and hear what's there, that would be great, just as much as for support and nothing else. And I had mentioned that Blue Mountain is a company that I had spoke to about this change detection. And, you know, kind of just gave him a real quick overview of how it worked. And, I mean, he wasn't like, oh, no, that's nothing we would ever use. But he doesn't, I don't think he knows enough about it to say, oh, I'm totally on board with that and I want to pay $10,000 for it. You know, I certainly didn't get that vibe from him, but, you know, he was aware that that was a service that they did offer. That's about all I can tell you.
You would have the option to approve the contract and table the decision of the change detection cost until after Blue Mountain could possibly meet with Donnie and explain the service as they offer it. That would be an option, or you could approve it either way.
I'd just like to have his opinion since he is the assessor.
Let's figure out on that way then, that needs to be in the money.
Are you still going to be in session this afternoon?
They are, I don't know.
I was going to say, I mean, we could review, maybe he's at lunch right now or something or maybe he was just with somebody. And if you're going to still be in session this afternoon, we could actually make that decision this afternoon.
On the change detection, you could go ahead and motion now.
Motion now and have that cut out regarding the $7,192.58 for the change detection. So if I understand, I can make a motion if you'd like. I would make a motion that we accept the parallel bid of Blue Mountain for a 2016 spring ortho photography, one-year contract amount of $15,975. And further that we enter into approval for a multi-year contract to 2016, 2019 and 2022 at a rate of $15,975,000 per year for a total of $47,925, or a total for the project of $63,900. I would also recommend that we consider the change detection bid in the amount of $7,192.58, but not make a final decision on that portion of the contract until we have an opportunity to speak with the county assessor. Does that cover that?
Just to clarify, it's either the one-year contract or the three-year contract. It will be combined of both. So if you do the three-years, a total of $47,925.
I think, yeah, the three-year contract is the one we should enter into. Why did they put a project total of $63,000 on that?
My guess is that's an Excel formatting issue. They use this table on a regular basis, it totals on the bottom right and it totaled. You are either entering into a one-year contract for $15,975 or a three-year contract for $47,925.
So that is my motion. We defer making a, that we defer making a decision on the $7,192.58 change detection contract until after converting with the assessor. About a second?
You definitely have a second on that.
Been moved and seconded, all favors signify, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, Terry. Do we have to follow up with the assessor today or...
You wouldn't have to.
I would say maybe the assessor would like to go up to the company, you know what I mean? To see exactly what they did. We can make our decision next Thursday, Terry, would that be all right?
Sure, I can, well, depending on when they meet. I'll contact Blue Mountain and let them know that you have awarded the three-year contract and request that they contact Donnie directly to set up a meeting to review the change detection service that they offer.
Yes, and then we'll make a decision, would be my suggestion.
And the other thing with regards to the affidavit of noncollusion, could you please do some research on that? I think that might be something that we want to adopt as a regular...
And what you can do is just add it to any RFP that you send out from now on?
Well, I don't know about just RFPs, but someone that were, you know, putting a bid out for a piece of equipment for anything.
Look, anytime you put out a bid, it would be a request or proposal. So we can add it as a requirement for any bid submissions, that they would have to include that in their submission.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I'm very excited. This is like Christmas for me today.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a happy new year.